I forgot I was muted. Hello, everybody. We are live. Okay, so I need to jump straight into painting today because I want to do two different beach scenes. And we're here for two hours, so it's a lot. So I will just get started taping my page while everybody filters in. Hey Matthew, hey Becky, how are you guys doing today? Let me see, maybe turn my light up a little bit. We are being blessed by Vader's presence today. He came in like two seconds before I was about to hit go live. And I was like, oh great, because he always meows a lot when he first comes in. So I gave him a little snack. He's on his, his new castle. We got him a new cat tower. And hopefully he'll be, he'll be chill. It's really cold out, so when he came inside, he was freezing. So I cuddled him and get him warm. So I hope he just is really cozy and he goes to sleep. Hey lady. Alright. So if anyone wants to paint with me today, I am going to be doing beach scenes. It's with gouache. And if you want to use the reference photos I'm using, I'll put them in chat. Oops. There are two reference photos. Hopefully we'll get to both of them. The first one is gonna be quite a challenge because I don't do that many sunset type scenes. You haven't seen stream on my channel? Welcome. Hey Xenium. Well, you'll hear plenty of his meows throughout the stream, I'm sure. He saves them for you guys, I swear. He like comes in right when I'm about to stream, just so he can meow at you. Um, if by any chance, are you doing any dry brush techniques today? You could talk a little about it. I'm struggling with it. Oh, I'm definitely doing dry brush. And yeah, we can, I can talk about it once we get into that. Um, it's my favorite technique with gouache, my favorite effect. I really like the wet into wet kind of thing. Like for instance, uh, the background of this one in the distant hills was very wet gouache. So I get like a really flowy look, but all this lovely texture in the foreground is basically the dry brush technique. And I love how that looks with gouache. It, it, oh, it just looks great with gouache. I mean, I like it with watercolor as well, but it's really intense with gouache. You can just use it for so many things too. Alright. So these are the colors I'm gonna use today. I'm using permanent alizarin crimson, um, my cadmium free yellow lemon, or lemon yellow, uh, burnt umber, which I haven't used that much on my stream, uh, and my new jet black tube, and Prussian blue. So. Let's get this set up. I know. Poor baby. No. No. Gotta go chill. It's hard for you to paint foggy landscapes. That is a, like wet into wet technique is really tricky with gouache. Oh, you sound so sad. So sad. I'll give you a quick little pet. Say hi to everyone. Aw. Say hi. Hey Donald. Oh my gosh, I've been loving, loving, loving the Etcher sketchbooks. Go on, go up in your castle. So we, as I said, we got him a new castle, a new cat tower. And it has a huge basket because in his old one, he was like overflowing and he could barely curl up inside it. And then on the top, it has a massive plush, um, like bed area. Whereas in the old one, it only had a really tiny round top. So he was always like, has all his legs would like hang off of it. He couldn't really like fall asleep on the top. So now, he's uh, settling into his new digs. Vader, my cat's name is Vader and it's a boy, he's a boy. Vader, you know. Hey Sweet Peach, hey Victorian Studio. Um, okay, just making sure I didn't miss anything in chat. Alright, we should be good to go. Only time will tell. So I guess I'm gonna put, this is how I usually set up my, my uh, palette. So I use a mixing tray that came out of my watercolor, uh, palette. My closed, my sealable watercolor palette. And this is a piece of acrylic stay wet palette paper. And I soak it in water for, I try to do it for a while, but if not, I at least get it wet. So this is like, kind of stuck to this because it's wet. And you could also use a damp paper towel, but those often will soak up a lot of the gouache if you don't work quickly. And I am gonna be working for two hours, so I want it to be, I want it to last. Hey sleeve of hell, just needs a lot of attention. Okay, no worries. Hopefully you'll get a weekend, this weekend, if you know what I mean. After a busy week. So I usually do two piles of white because I keep my warm colors over here and my cool colors over here. And just helps to reduce the cross contamination of colors a little bit. It still happens, but you know, it's okay. And I start off with little piles of paint because I can always add more. Um, I can't really show it on stream very easily, but, uh, if you, are you on Discord Xenium? Or if you email me or somehow message me, I can send you the link that I bought it through, like on the Amazon link. You can see when the palette paper is really, really wet, this is what happens. But it's fine. It's not, it's nothing to worry about. Oh, that's good. And black. Okay, let's do this. So is anyone just, um, anyone sketching or painting while you watch? I need to like think of my strategy for this, this painting. So, the painting, I'm, I'm doing the one that's below me, the reference. Uh, although it's a lot wider that I just could only fit that much on the stream. Uh, so again, if you need the reference photo, type exclamation point ref. If you wanna try to paint it with me. Uh, so I think my strategy is going to be a somewhat diluted layer of those sky colors. So I'll do like a gradient from that pink color over to the yellow. Cause it kind of shifts. There's like lots of pink on the left and the middle area, and then yellow-ish out around that. Doesn't matter what I do at the bottom because that's gonna be covered by sand anyway. Um. So yeah, that's my strategy. So I'm gonna go with diluted gouache now and do all that color. You're gonna try to paint along. You're gonna work with watercolor and gouache. Hey Gabriel. Looking up brush stroke exercises, I'll be doing those. Um, if anyone has any suggestions on where to start, I'm down to try them out. Brush stroke exercises. Uh, huh, that's a good, that's interesting. I'm, I'm sure I've seen some over time, but at the moment, nothing is coming to mind. Are you on Skillshare? I think I saw you on there. There may be some on there, uh, otherwise, I mean, like, I don't have a specific video about it, but I have talked about it a lot throughout different videos I've done and my Skillshare classes. Uh, like especially the rocks, trees, the, the longer classes I put on Skillshare. Within those lessons, I demonstrate and talk about the different types of brush marks. The mark making. So I'm sorry that it's not like a condensed video about that topic. Um, but you know, it's, you may, you may get something out of it. You wanted to paint along, but you're too tired. It's 6:00 AM. Ooh, yeah. But that's, that's early for painting, isn't it? That's early for any kind of creativity, kind of creative endeavor. Alright, so to get that pink tone, I used a little bit of the lemon yellow, the alizarin crimson and a little white. And I'm just gonna start brushing. And keep it, I'm keeping it pretty wet. And then I'm gonna add a little more yellow to make it more orangey. And I'm just brushing it from the right side. Not sure how well that's gonna work because it sometimes changes a lot when it dries. I'm probably gonna come back and do like a brighter dry brush kind of thing on the, or, or another layer of wet. I don't know. I don't know. We'll see. The other thing that is really deceiving is, um, so if you look at the reference photo. Okay, we got this reference photo. This is not gonna come across very well on the stream, but, sometimes when you look at a photo like this, you're like, oh my God, that sky is so bright because look how dark the sand is. But it's deceiving. If you actually hold something white up against that sky, you can actually see it's not white. It's not even close to white. It has some speckles of bright yellow, whitish yellow, but a lot of the sky is actually pretty dark. And so this kind of thing might be a little too dark. But once I put the sand color on, it'll brighten it up like crazy. It'll be like super, it'll pop against that. So the contrast is what really does it, which is really tricky. So doing this kind of study is awesome for like honing your awareness of values in your, um, like how to, how to figure out what values you're looking at in your reference. Uh, and it just comes with experience. Like I said, I don't do a ton of sunsets, so I'm not really, really experienced with it. And it is kind of an, an optical illusion at times. What's the difference between zinc and titanium white? It's the pigment they use and usually zinc is slightly more transparent and when it dries, like if you compare them side to side, usually the, the zinc will appear slightly more, um, cooler. Although it depends on the lighting because I've seen it in the opposite. So more importantly, I would say it's the, the zinc feels a little bit more transparent, which means you'll get brighter, cleaner mixes. Whereas the titanium white is so white, it reflects so much light that it like brightens it up. It like instantly makes your colors more pastel. Like you know how when you put white with red, you'll get like a peach color? It like intensifies that pastel effect. So they both can be used interchangeably. Doesn't make a, in my opinion, doesn't make like a drastic difference. Uh, it just depends on how you're using it. Like if I'm using white, pure white on top of a scene to like do a highlight on something, titanium white is better for me. I find that it just is like the most white I can get. It reflects so much more light. Uh, but then again, if you do like really thick zinc white, or not, you know, can't go too thick. But if you use really thick zinc white, it still has kind of the same effect. Alright. So. Once that dries, I'm gonna be doing, maybe some of those bright clouds. Actually, I want a smaller brush. With less water. Just like dried yellow paint on this one. Weird. Hey Katarina, how's it going? Okay, so you can barely see that because it's so light. It looks more noticeable in person. But I'm just doing, streaks of uh, really bright yellow to kind of mimic those clouds that are at a slight angle above the horizon. And I'm just gonna do a, a little bit. And also before I go into the foreground, I want to do those distant mountains, which are, when I squint, they look kind of like a lilac color. So, do some alizarin crimson, some Prussian blue and white. Which is way too wet. My palette is like really wet for some reason. Let's do that again. So, Prussian blue, alizarin crimson, white. It's a little too blue. Zoom out so you can see the colors. Um, I think that's gonna be like crazy dark, so I'll make a lighter version next to it. Although lighter colors dry darker and darker colors dry lighter in gouache, so it's really tricky. Uh, but we'll try this one. We'll try this color. It, it may uh, still be too dark, so I'll lighten it a little. And I'm not gonna include that power plant that's in the distance because ew, I'm gonna do just mountains back there. And I'll try to make my horizon straight. Still use, I'm, I'm using pretty thick gouache, so I'm not really using any water. Kind of just fades off to the distance on the right. Um, so if that ends up drying too dark, I may come back with another layer of slightly lighter lilac. Hey Dawn. But, next for the water. So the water is, if I squint at it, it looks like a, it's my immediate reaction or my immediate, um, thought to do the water is to do a dry brush with this same color. Maybe a little lighter and get that sparkly effect on the water. So you're, a lot of this will be showing through. And then in the foreground where you see like the wave coming up on the shore, I'll use a little bit more of that with like a line. Hopefully that works. So I may use my bigger brush. Actually, no. What do I want to use? Woozy, Doozy, hello, how are you today? I guess we'll just stick with this brush. And I'm getting lots of that on my brush, on my brush. And it's a dry brush, like I said. If I have to, so one thing with dry brush is if you have a lot of water in your brush, which is sometimes hard to tell, you'll end up with streaks. So you want to get it like really, really dry and load up a little bit more pigment than you think you might need. Um, but again, it's like so hard to explain it. You just have to, you just have to do it. And the more you do it, the more you know those ratios that you need. Isn't that like the worst thing you want to, you don't want to hear that when you're learning how to do something? You don't want to hear the, the person say, you gotta just do it. Um, in this case, because it's the ocean is, the waves are coming in, it doesn't matter too much if I have any streaks. Because if you actually look at the reference photo, there are visible streaks in there. So if anything, it'll kind of help, make it look like the water. But I want a little bit less. I want the main lines in the painting to be like when I have the, uh, the, the wave coming up on shore. And less is more. With dry brush, try going less first and then if you need to add more, continue to, to add on top of that. You always add too much water, ends up being a block of color. Then yeah, definitely too much water or maybe even too much pigment. It is a very delicate balance because you want it to be, you want there to be just enough pigment on the brush for it to come off on your paper, but not too much where it just like globs onto your paper. Um, and of course, if you have water, that's gonna dilute the gouache and it's gonna make it just spread like a big thick brush stroke, which you don't want. So, so yeah, it's a, it's, it's tricky. For sure. Alright. I'll show you a close up so you can kind of get an idea. So like you can see, I do have some streaks in there, but lots of little speckles. And when you back up, it kind of appears as movement on the surface of the water. Um, but I can always come back and add more. And let's see. Where do I want my wave? I want my wave. So I'm gonna have some rocks coming into the picture like this. So it's gonna be kind of like this. Trying to keep it really, really thin. I want like a very subtle little line here. If you back up enough, all my work looks good. Yes. Your paper is way more textured than mine, different effect. Oh, are you using, um, hot press? Or like what, what kind of paper are you using? I added a bit more rough texture by the wave as it comes up on shore. Alright. And then. Ew, no. Hmm, I think Wolfie likes haggis. I'm vegetarian. Ain't gonna happen. I even tried vegan or vegetarian haggis and it was disgusting. Alright, uh, so for the foreground sand, I am going to use a similar color to what I already did, but I'm gonna add more of the red and the brown into it. Cause even though it, it looks really cool compared to the sky, um, it does have some warmth in it. It's like, gotta, has a lot of, a lot of colors going on. And the cool thing is I can do like, you know, my, I can do one layer of color and then I can come back in some areas and do a dry brush of another color. And again, when you kind of like look at the whole thing altogether, you see, it, it just like combines into this really colorful sand. Hey Marina. Well, I'm gonna try to do two studies today, so, uh, the next one is a daytime beach scene. This one is a sunset. Switch to my big brush again. And. There we go. So, I'm gonna add a little bit of water so it flows a little bit better. And then when I'm adding this foreground sand, I don't really care if parts of it are dry brush, parts of it are wet and flowy, like the, the more variety, the better. But I lean more towards dry brush when I'm doing wet sand because it has a really cool effect. Oh yeah, Woozy. Um, as a reminder, guys, my holiday print sale is ending on Sunday. So you have until the end of the day, Sunday. If you want to order. Don't forget. So this is just my first layer of sand and I can always come back and add more color. Cause it's like kind of dull right now. I, I wouldn't really want to leave it like this. I want to add some more variety. Um, but yeah, I also don't want to overdo. I want to leave some of that wet sand effect. The other, the other strategy you could use for this, which is totally different and you would have to do this from the very beginning, is to do a wet into wet kind of thing where you do the sky color and then as you come down here, you immediately shift into the sand color. And that is a lot harder, I think. Um, but it's, uh, it, it looks really cool. Uh, do I have? This is one that I kind of did that with. But then I came back and I added more textures and colors on the surface of the sand. So you can't really tell that I did that. Thanks Woozy. Been crying to paint beaches for days. You could always, you know, you could go back and watch the replay once the stream is over, if you want to catch the beginning of this one. What works of old masters was inspired and on what examples did you learn to paint with gouache? Um, I have a video about that actually. One of my older gouache videos, I do some master studies. Like, you know, where you take a, find a painting by an artist you absolutely love, um, whether they're a find a painting by an artist you absolutely love, um, whether they're a mass, master artist or not. And then you try to replicate what you see and like it teaches you so much about color and light. At least I, I learn a ton. And I have a video where I do a few of those and I talk through the whole process. So if you're interested, go dig around in those old gouache videos. Perfect to relax, uh, learn, relax and be creative. Awesome. Also, hey mouse. Do you always work light to dark? No, I work background to foreground with gouache. So it totally depends on the scene. Um, there's, there's been a few paintings where I if I'm just doing one or two layers of gouache and I'm not doing like a background to foreground thing, then that case I would probably work dark to light because it's a lot harder to get rid of that white in your mixes, once it's in there. So just like with oil, like you'll struggle to get your darks once you add white. Like cement? Um. Yeah, I mean shifting from one medium to another can be tricky for many reasons. But it teaches you so much. Alright, so there's definitely some li- on the transition between this uh, this color and the reflections, there's like a bit of that purple, that lilac color we did earlier. So I'm gonna get some of that mixed up and then try to do a dry brush effect on the edge. Yeah, gouache is so much fun. It depends on, like, I feel like depending on how people, what people are painting and when their normal workflow, it can be difficult to transition into gouache. But for me, it was really easy because it all, I already had a, a similar workflow when I was doing um mediums before gouache, if that makes sense, like like I used it very similarly acrylic and um watercolor and stuff. Hopefully this will soften the edges. So I think the sand is overall too dark, so I'm gonna kinda come back in with some more color, some dry effects. Maybe like a combination of the, the the color I did for the base and the lilac tone. Also, I, I did change the composition of this painting to fit my page, so I'm gonna come back in with rocks. And I'll probably even add little pools of reflected light, cause I think that looks really pretty in the photo. Hey Laura, how are you today? The video about the master studies. Oh, thanks Woozy. Woozy posted the video I was talking about. There's almost like a here you go, close up. There's like a um, a faint glow of this lilac color on the surface of the sand, so doing little um, the dry brush is cool because it's almost like that broken color effect where you have two colors next to each other. You're not necessarily blending them, but the, your eyeballs, when you look at it, sees them together, like they, your eye combines them as a color. So it's a lot of fun to play with for different effects. Okay, now let's add some rocks, cause I think having that really dark, dark in the painting will help us figure out if we ha- if we have our values correct. So I'm gonna go with black and Prussian blue. And I'm, I'm using pretty thick gouache. Now. I was like holding my breath that whole time. Um, I don't know if I have a small enough brush to paint those people. They are super teeny tiny. I think if anything, they would just look like little blobs and it might be really confusing. Doing pretty well Laura. Today was like, it went by in such a blur. So did yesterday, actually. I've been working on a video, um I've, I've been working on it for like a week already and I'll probably release it next week before I go to Sky, but it's about um, I guess I'll just distill all of it down to how I take reference photos, tips for taking reference photos and how to use them back in the studio. Or like just showing my whole workflow for that. And like I went on a bunch of hikes and I took footage of me doing the thing, taking the photos and then back to the studio and showing how I get them ready on the computer. And then I, the next part I have to edit is me actually painting from some of the reference photos. And it's so much editing. But I'm really excited for it, cause it's something that people ask a lot and I never really, I, I don't have any videos about it. I mean, I have one that's like talking about location scouting, but this is way more in depth. Let's see, okay, so I don't wanna take too long on this first study, cause the next one is gonna be a two-spread painting. Um. So this is, this is good. Showing how I work quickly. Every approach, everyone approaches those things a little different. Yeah, I think so too. I love watching photographer vlogs. I watch so many photographer vlogs and I mean, since I'm not a photographer YouTube channel, I know, I just never feel like I, I don't know, I just never think about going into that kind of thing, so. Anyways, I'm excited. I'm gonna try to take lots of behind-the-scenes footage of our trip to Sky as well. I'm, you know, it always depends on the weather though, if there'll really be much to share. But um, you know, I'll have plenty of views to share at least from our hikes. Good at soft edges, you have trouble with soft touches and gouache. Yeah, yeah, I mean that's, I always say that's one of the tricky things about gouache. Seems like everything is tricky with gouache. Um, but I think it is tricky with gouache because it dries so fast. It's as opposed to like oil paint where you know, you put your pa- you put your brush stroke down and you have all the time in the world to go in and soften it. You, in gouache, you put your brush stroke down and like within a few seconds, it's totally dry. And so you either have to work on top of it or add water and try to soften an edge and once you add water, it's chaos. Or it can be chaos. Aw, thank you Becky. I put is, I put a so much effort and time into my videos, especially this year, I tried to like increase my video quality. I'm still learning a lot about the technical side of it. But um, but like, I kinda figured out recently that I want my videos to be really peaceful to watch and to be like a, a glimpse of my little corner of the world. Cause I love Scotland so much and I wanna share everything I see like all the time. And so I feel like I need to, like I want to incorporate more scenery into them and more of the reasoning why I paint certain things. Um, anyways, it's, I appreciate you saying that. There's all these little like rocks and little bits of seaweed here and there. In the foreground, there seems to be this big cluster of rocks, so. Gonna get my big flat brush. Um. How, how long are we staying? We are going for three nights, so we have two full days for hiking and the other like we, you know, you know how it is when you travel to and from a place. Um. But oh my gosh, on the day we leave, we have to check out at like nine AM and we're driving straight to Glasgow and dropping off paintings at my gallery and coming straight home and it's gonna be like eight hours of driving. I'm not looking forward to that. If it's really pretty, I can maybe take some photos out the window as we drive, but we're gonna be so tired, I'm not gonna wanna like stop that much. Which sucks because we drive through some really pretty areas. But you know, it is what it is. It's just because of the um COVID lockdown that we ca- we're not allowed to stay there, cause Glasgow is in, uh, Glasgow's in level three, or I don't know, they're in a different lockdown level than us. And it's complicated, but basically we're not allowed to stay there. Unless it changes before we leave, which would be really, if it changes and we're allowed to stay there, uh, then I can maybe convince Wolfie for us to stay one night at least, so we're not driving eight hours in a day. Alright, so I think the last thing I'm gonna do is add a few of those glistening puddles. Because they really make it pop in the foreground. They're all kind of right near the rocks. Just making it up as I go at this point. What a, what shenanigans. Luckily Wolfie's mom is going to come house it and cat sit for us. That's a huge relief. Alright, I think that's gonna do it. Um, just because I want to move on to the other study. Uh, I can always come back and add more to this one, but I feel pretty happy with it. Although I can already see something that's annoying. I'm gonna probably need to, oh god, this is gon- I'm gonna regret this. I'm gonna regret this. You know how I always say how hard it is to color match in gouache? Well, I am gonna try. Because my horizon is not straight. And that's annoying. Pretty sure this is too dark. Which means I have to fill in the whole thing. That's what you wanna hear when you join a livestream? I'm gonna regret this. Alright, it wasn't so bad. Alright, well, the only thing, uh, the only other thing I can think of is maybe doing a little more dry brush on the water because it's kind of blending into where the reflection on the sand is. And I do want them to be obviously different, like this line of, this line helps, but just add a little more dry brush to the water. So it's like obviously waves. Alright, but yeah, if I keep going, I'm definitely gonna mess it up, so I'm gonna stop. Soothing and relaxing in a great learning format? Aw, thanks Zenium. One thing that bothers me with my videos is I always, always struggle with audio quality. And I have to do so much post-editing and also sometimes the video quality itself. But partially because I just, I need to like take some kind of, maybe on Skillshare I can find a class about audio. Um, and I have equipment, I just need to figure out how to use it properly. Ta-da, we're done. Next, we will go to the beach on a sunny day. If I was painting this in person at sunset, I would have probably five minutes of this light. So that gives you an idea of how quick you need to work when you're painting outside. Especially at the extreme ends of the day, like sunrise and sunset. Especially at the extreme ends of the day, like sunrise and sunset, the colors change so annoyingly fast. To the point where nowadays, like I have done a few sunset paintings and it was frantic. So nowadays, all I do is just go and take references. Who's he left stream running? Wait, what? Ah. There we go. There we go, we did it. Although I just noticed I got some, I went outside the paint, the, the borders of the tape. Which, it's okay. My phone just told me that it's time to stream on YouTube. Psh, phone. So behind the times. There we go. It's not too bad. Okay, breathe and go to the next photo. So this is gonna be photo number two. Which is a sunny beach day and I'm gonna be doing a full spread. So that's why I have this long crop going on in my photo. Um, but I do need to make sure this is totally dry because I don't want it to get paint on the left side. So what I'll do is go refresh my water because it's really gross. So I'll be right back, you guys. And I need to say hi to Vader. Hello. He's a little. He loves his little, his little castle. Taking a photo for you. So whoever was asking about Vader's new castle, this is what it looks like. So it has the two houses, the two rooms. It has a giant basket and a big huge bed on top, which that's him right now. He's loving it. Hi Tony. Late but enthusiastic. Excellent. Alright, I think it's probably dry. I don't see any reflection. So we're gonna go to the next page and do I want to tape it down or do I just wanna fill the whole thing? I think I just wanna fill the whole thing. This is gonna be harder to film. I mean, they look really nice when they're taped down. And it helps, like when I'm holding the edges, I can avoid touching the painting, but it's already such limited space. Hmm. We'll just fill the whole thing. Why not? Hi Diane. Hey Joel, Joel. Lucky Vader, I know, his bed looks so comfy. Cool, okay. Since I have a ton of paint left on my palette from last time, I'm just gonna use those colors. And I'm gonna just start laying in big chunks of color in different areas. Watered down, definitely watered down. Ah crap, I probably should have sketched first, huh? Oh well. I'm using a very diluted layer right now, just to like get something started. Plus I wanna get a nice smooth transition to the uh, um, water, like from the sand to the water. So I have to work quick. Oh, I forgot how annoying it is to go over the center line. Oh well. We're gonna be struggling at the center line a little bit. It's okay though. Like, the distortion that happens on the pages from the center line to the other areas is so hard to figure out sometimes. Okay, that's a good enough start. Um, I definitely need to let that dry. Oh, here's another reason why it's good to tape your pages, cause this kind of thing happens otherwise. If you go like all the way to the edge. Schnickle, excuse me. It, it, it is actually straight, okay? It's probably hard to tell, but it is. I'm looking at it from a different angle than you guys, but if I tilt my page up towards me, it's straight. By the way, guys, Schnickle7 is my partner in crime. Feel free to, actually no, don't ask him questions about me. And Schnickle, you better uh, keep it shut, keep it quiet. No, no revealing big secrets. Uh, actually while this, while I'm waiting, I might as well do the sky, which is gonna be a nice blue. It's my story and I'm sticking to it. He just wants brownie points. Ooh, brownies. We haven't made, oh, we should totally make brownies for the road, for the road trip. Okay, there we go. Brownies with cream cheese frosting? I don't know if I would like that. I mean, never say never. Luckily, this paper dries pretty fit quickly, like now this is flat, but the top is curved because that's the wet part. So, you know, you can see that the bottom is already dry and flattened again, which is nice. So we'll wait for that to dry for a second. I love cream cheese frosting on other types of baked goods, but I just can't imagine it on a brownie. Maybe, well, I, I make brownies that have like chocolate chunks in them and there's also dark chocolate, so they, actually that, if it was a little bit more on the dark chocolate side, it might go really well with that. Back to work now. Okay, bye. Um, so I sh, well no, we're not gonna sketch, we're just gonna go forward. Whatever happens, happens. We do have some distant mountains, which I'm going to make sure I go across the center line to bridge it together. Way too dark. When I do my first layers of detail, I, I'm always just thinking about the mid, well, usually I'm thinking about the midtones, so for instance, these distant hills. The really far away ones are more of a blue color than the closer ones are green and they change, they have lots of colors. So I'm thi, I'm doing like a base color of green and then I'll come back in with my shadows and my highlights. And there's also lots of houses and all sorts of stuff back there, so not sure how much I'm gonna add or how much detail I wanna go into back there. But I still need to have, have like a base of this started, so. Hey Melanie. So that'll be the extent of that. I'm gonna have the shadow side be on the right. Foreground area is like really rocky and cliffy. Um, show you. See, when I tilt it down, it looks crooked, but when I show you straight on, it's showing you how straight it is. Tattoo on my right hand. It's really hard to show on stream because it'll be upside down for you. Um, but you can kinda see it. I can't really turn it. Think of, imagine that upside down. It is a um, it is, it represents Luthien and Baron, the story of Luthien and Baron from the Silmarillion. But it's done in the style of one of Maxfield Parish's paintings. So it's like a, it looks like an oil painting basically, which is really cool. Yeah, Luthien and Baron is a story in the Silmarillion by Token. If you know the story, then we are, are already friends. Alright, I'm gonna add some of the white glistening areas of the beach, like the sand is really bright and reflective in some spots. You love all the token books? Yes. Fellow token nerds unite. I also have, um, it's kind of hard to show, but I have up here the Elvish inscription, uh, which is kind of on like this armor plate thing, but it's the part of um, the poem that reads, "All that is gold does not glitter." "All that is gold does not glitter, not all those who wander are lost." Uh, "All that is gold does not glitter, not all those who wander are lost." "The old that is strong does not wither, deep roots are not reached by frost." There you go. I was like trying to flip those, in those last two phrases for some reason in my head. It's longer than that, but you know, you get the idea. But that part is very meaningful to me and I take it uh, to mean, or it reminds me that, you know, in life, not, the, the things that are most valuable to me are not money, it's not anything of, like, it's nothing currency, it's not gold. It's not riches, it's experiences and all the, so many intangible things that matter the most to me. And yeah, it just always reminds me to kinda keep my head on straight. I need a bigger brush, I'm struggling. Um, he read that when you were a child? Yes. On this side of my arm, um, uh, my upper sleeve is, depicts uh, Varda Elontari, one of the valor, where she saves the nectar from the two trees, the- Varda Elontari, one of the valor, where she saves the nectar from the two trees, the, um... Before Melkor destroys them, which then, you know, they take and create the Silmarils. Uh, but, and this, this style, the upper sleeve is in like an more of an older, uh, like a more classic tattoo style, whereas this one is very much like a painting, it's like an oil painting. And then I have my black and white area, which is like a totally different style. Someday, I really wanna finish this sleeve down here, and I want it to be all black and gray, and then someday, maybe, I'll finish this upper sleeve and also have it be probably black and gray, although it might be cool to fade it down into the color somehow. I find it really difficult to think like a tattoo artist, like, I just wanna give them my ideas and then make- Like, they'll make it awesome as a tattoo. Can someone please tell me why I decided to paint across two spreads and deal with the stupid center line? Cause right now, I am regretting it. My hope is that it'll look really cool as a long spread. Cause I don't have any of those in the sketchbook yet. And I usually do at least one. Do you guys have a favorite story by Tolkien? There's so many. The surprise when you page- Turn the page and you get a double! I know, it's like, whoa! This is a Sea White of Brighton watercolor sketchbook. Hey, Noreen, happy Friday! I actually took a class on, uh, Tolkien books, Tolkien's life, basically, in college, and it's really fascinating to- And they have, I think they have a few documentaries since I graduated, but, uh... It's really fascinating to kinda look at his life and see his experiences and how he drew on his experiences to create these amazingly in-depth worlds and stories. Um... Yeah, it's, it's really cool, if you like that kinda thing. I mean, every- Pretty much every author does that, right? But when you're reading about someone like him, who you've read his story since you were a little kid, and you know the character so well, and you know all the little- All the fun stories, like, reading about his life, going into it on a deeper level is fascinating. It's hard to show you the whole thing. I know I keep like moving it around to get certain angles. Which podcast? If you're interested, there are a few, I mean, last time I checked, there are a few YouTube channels that do this, but there's one that is an audiobook, audio, someone reading the Silmarillion out loud to you, so if you're, um, if you commute a lot, or if you're- If you go on lots of walks, you can listen to it, and it is quite a tedious book. I love it, and I love so many of the stories in it, but, oh my god, it is like reading the bible. It's like all about the people's names and the family trees and the dates, and it's so heavy! But if you can get through that stuff, eh, there's like so many cool stories sprinkled throughout, and just gives you like a deeper connection to all of his stories, all of his characters. And then, like, you read it, and then you go watch the Lord of the Rings trilogy again, and you're like, whoa! Like, you just understand so much more, and it feels so much more powerful, to me, anyway. Prancing Pony Podcast, yes! Such a good one. Let's get some of these big foreground rocks in, because I feel like that really helps with the overall composition. Sorry, move it over. Sorry, I know I'm not like explaining what I'm doing in this one a lot, because it's a big painting, and I wanted to make sure I finished it on stream. So, I hope you guys are having fun either way. And if you're painting with me and you have any questions, feel free to ask, but sometimes it's good to just give it a go. See what you can come up with. Once I get more of these bigger foreground rocks in, I'm gonna come back with more of the reflections and stuff, cause I love that bit, I love that part of it. Seriously, this crease! Doing my nut in! Makes it so hard to get nice, smooth brushstrokes. Okay, so, there's, um... I think I wanna darken the sand a little bit in the foreground. That's a little bit better. Oh, I didn't have any clouds either. Um, I'll use this one, cause bristles are softer. Running out of space on my palette for, like, blue mixes. It's too- It's all too brown and yellow. I like to use clouds to like guide the eye through the painting, like, I can do them at an angle like this, so the- So it kind of has that effect, that sweeping effect. Especially in a wide panorama like this. It's really cool to have like a lot of angles to the sky, to the clouds. I mean, obviously, these aren't super, um, I'm not going detailed in the clouds, I'm trying to keep it really loose. It's pretty much just dry brush. Sorry if you can't see that. Let that dry, and then we can see what else we wanna add there. I think this scene would be really fun with, like, a nice thick gouache painting, so instead of doing lots of thin layers, it would be only one or two really, really thick layers. I think that, uh... That would be a lot of fun. I'm also painting the, uh, I have this scene, um, not the same layout or anything, but this, I'm using the reference photos from this beach trip for a bunch of my oil paintings right now. And it is so much fun to play with wet sand effects in thick oil paint, like, it's one of my new favorite things. Oh, hey, Amy! Hey, Sophia! How are you guys doing? I'm on reference photo number two, if you are just joining me to paint, um... But yeah, I hope you have fun if you decide to paint them. Uh, and just to quickly show you, we did reference photo number one earlier, so this was that one. Poor baby! "Trying to get through the pandemic by learning how to paint, and your streams are really helpful. Painting from reference of your Greek island trips." If you wanna, I can send you pics. That sounds amazing! Oh my gosh! Um, Amy, are you in our Discord? If you'd like to, like, hang out offline, we have a Discord channel, and, um, there's like an art chat in there that you can share- there's like, an art chat in there that you can share stuff you're working on and ask questions. There's also a photo chat where you can just dump inspirational photos if you want to. It's pretty awesome. But, um, since I only stream twice a week, it's, it's where we hang out most, most of the time when I'm offline. Uh, here's the link. It's also in my description, I think. Wow, I was trying to type Discord, and I typed record. "nickname is Stella?" Okay, uh, okay. I apologize if I end up calling you by whatever username you're using. Um, it's really hard to remember when people use a different username versus their actual name. Eventually, I get it, but it takes me a while. But yeah, feel free to share what you're working on, or if you wanna share your photos of your trip. Be great to see them. No, it's okay. I mean, do, use whatever you want. It's up to you. It's, I'm just letting you know that, you know, it might take me a while to get it. My god, when I first started streaming on Twitch, I had a Google spreadsheet, a, a, you know, just a spreadsheet that I would update with people's usernames and their real name, if they ever told me their real name. And I would like, try to memorize it, but then eventually, over the years, like, I meet so many people, like, thousands of people, that it's just impossible. So, it, it's more often that the regulars that show up, like, stream after stream and talk a lot, are the people that I remember their names a lot more. Or if someone orders from me a lot, cuz I send the stuff to them, and I see their name, and it's like, it just clicks really fast. Um, but anyways. That's one of the hard parts about streaming is because I want to call everyone by their name, if they prefer it, and um, it can be really hard when you meet so many people. And I always feel bad. I feel guilty. Man, okay. I even, even added any of the detail in the distance. I was gonna go back and do all the houses, and I'm barely even finishing the foreground. Oh, I know. I would love to go to Greece. Um, so I will, I will really enjoy your images. What was your favorite place? If I, if I only had like, a week in Greece, what do you suggest that I do? That's probably a really unfair question, isn't it? That's like, someone asking me, "If I only had a week in Scotland, what should I do?" Cuz it totally depends on what you're into. If you're into hiking, I have a totally different itinerary for you than if you're into like, going to castles or, or distilleries. So, just so you know, I'm into hiking. I don't like cities, really. I mean, I'll go to a city to see it, but I don't like, I wanna be in nature. Mountains, valleys, beaches, caves, and pink sand beaches. Oh, my gosh, that sounds amazing. That's good to know. Thank you. That's, that's good advice. Someday, when we're all able to travel again, we can make fun plans to go to all these wonderful places. Oh, that sounds awesome. Thank you. Alonis, Alonisos? Is that how I say it? I just got paint water in my mouth. Oh, my gosh. Lady, that sounds intense, and also incredible. Yes? I know. I know. Can you believe it, Vader? Yeah. Yes. I can't believe it. Oh, man. I feel like I can go ea, I can easily go overboard on all the sand, the, the wet sand and the reflections and everything. There's a lot going on. Oh, that would be awesome. Um, if you're in Discord, the photo chat is called Photo Nerds, so you can post however many you want from your trip. I'm sure people in there would love to see it as well. Thank you, Laura. I hope you're doing well. I feel like I always catch you on the, the hello or goodbye end. But have a good day. Stay warm. It's freezing here today. And it was sunny for like, two hours. It was deceivingly cold. I went to get groceries and left the house with just this really thin, long sleeve, and immediately came back inside and got my winter jacket and my gloves. Oh. He's playing. He never plays with his toys. What a good baby. Sorry, dude. I don't wanna listen to words. Pretty sure Vader's currently complaining because I'm not playing with him. And he's like, "Hey, I'm bored. Let's do something." "Avoid Athens. It's a really noisy and busy city." Oh, really? Okay, well, uh... It's one of those places that you think you need to see, you know? So, that's good to know. Maybe I can look up like, when the least busy time is to visit. "Ferry, uh, to the island nearby. It's a comfortable way to see big monuments and not spend the night in Athens." Oh, that's a cool idea. Roads. Um, oh, I, I don't have Discord open at the moment. When I stream, I usually close it, but I will check it out after stream. Which is in fifteen minutes, so... Uh, I'll see you soon in there. There's all these little, like, im, oh, god, no! Christmas music. I'm sorry. Oh, god, no. The only Christmas music I can stand is like, covers of certain Christmas songs in, like, Celtic covers or jazz, but no lyrics. I mean, there's a few that are, the lyrics are okay, but plus, it's just way too early. It's too soon, too soon. Um, okay, so I wanted to remind you guys that uh, next week, I will not be streaming on YouTube because we are going to Sky. If all, if everything goes to plan, we're gonna be gone. Uh, I'll be streaming on Monday on Twitch, and then the following week, I am streaming uh, I actually, actually have to, I have to figure out my Twitch schedule. I don't know what's going on with that. But the twenty-eighth is the paint along, so the Saturday, the twenty-eighth, after we get back, is the paint along. And I'll try to fit another stream, either Twitch or YouTube, in that week. Uh, but I'll also try to release the video about references and stuff next week before we go. That's my plan. And I'm pretty sure I can do it. Uh, but yeah, otherwise, you know, feel free to hang out in Discord. And if you don't already, you can follow me on Instagram because I post lots of stuff, including lots of stories. And when I'm traveling, like, this, when I go to Sky, I'm pretty sure we're gonna have internet at the B and B, so, uh, I'll be posting lots of views of Sky. Yep, I am. I'll be, um... Sorry, I was just reading what Amy said earlier. Um, the, the next video is about gathering reference. Uh, and how, like, my workflow, how I do it, and how I use them back in the studio when I'm actually painting. So, I hope it's, I hope it ends up being useful to you guys. I mean, obviously, everyone has a different process, but if nothing else, it will be, you can just join, actually, I just realized, the photo I'm using today for this painting was taken during the trip that is gonna be in the video. Like, the, the example that I'm using is of this location, so, yeah. It was such a cool day. I went there to paint, but unfortunately, the, the weather had other plans. So, I ended up using it as just a, a, taking lots of references, um, but anyway, you'll see in the video. I hope it's fun for you guys. Okay, I rem, I'm remembering why I use tape on my pages, because it's really hard to like, paint to the edge of it without getting near fingers in the way. Especially when it's curled like this. I don't know. Oh, man. Okay. Well, if anyone has any questions, feel free to message me. Or I guess, leave a comment on the video. I wish I could've gotten further on this one. I guess it was a bit ambitious to do two... "Have fun on Sky." I wonder why it said that had to be automotied? It's like, the most innocent message. Uh, but thank you. I'm so excited! To give you an idea of how excited I am, the Isle of Skye is my favorite place in the entire world and is the reason I fell in love with Scotland in the first place. And well, obviously I live here now, but that's a whole different story. So yeah, I try to go at least once a year and this year because of, you know, the pandemic and everything, we are lucky we're even going, but the year's almost over. Like, like my trips to Sky are where I gather 90% of my inspiration for the entire year for most of my paintings. So it's really important. Just keep doing like little touches here and there and I'm probably gonna ruin it if I keep going. All right. Well, I guess I'm gonna wrap it up there. Cause at this point I could keep going and keep touching it, but. Oh, yeah, we'll never say never, Amy. Oh, definitely xenium. We'll be doing lots of hiking and lots of drives. I painted like six of my other pages. Oh well, uh, but there we go. So we have our sunset. And we have the panorama. I may have to come back into this one and do more, but I like, for now it's, it's good. Thank you guys so much for hanging out with me. Uh, I'm gonna put my end screen on. And just as a reminder, uh, you can get this information in the description, video description, but my print sale ends Sunday. So if you've been waiting to order, now is the time, because otherwise you'll probably forget. Uh, and yeah, I will be streaming on Monday over on Twitch. So I hope I will see you guys over there. Um, but otherwise I'll see you in Discord and just around the interwebs. So thanks guys. I'll see you again soon.